This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Here. Would everybody please, I'm sorry, there are no minutes to approve, would everybody please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world.
Mr. Costas filling in as the city manager tonight, this is the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, the noise disturbance complaint at the Cultural Arts Center, we have Ostroga Acoustical Associates, they'll be doing the sound testing over there to get a sound level, so we should have a report on that in the coming week. The flyers for the Fourth of July and the summer concerts, they're available at City Hall, they're also here, I believe, in the council chambers. The Summit Avenue curbs, the complaint about the curbs due to the paving, our project manager is still getting in touch with the county and we are starting to work, trying to work something out where we can maybe avoid repaving that area and do something with the curbs.
Keep me informed on that.
Aye, certainly. The solar project for actually City Hall, the DPW, basically at City Hall, with the canopy with the solar panels, that is underway, the company's waiting for approval from BSE and J, so that should be a go. And we met today with the State Housing Committee regarding the clarified residence on Allen Street, and everything went well, the residents seem very happy with the results and the answers they got.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, before we do the resolution, are we going to do the presentation?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to have a short presentation from our CFO, Mr. Mangan, on our budget, which is being adopted tonight, hopefully. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, tonight, as we said last week, Thursday night's meeting, we did the budget amendment. Okay, tonight is the public hearing on that budget amendment, following the public hearing, you'll be voting on adoption, but I just wanted to run through a couple of things, this is going to be much, much quicker than the last one. What we said last Thursday was that the budget represents the administration's financial plan for achieving the mayor and council's goals and objectives under the direction of the mayor and council. And part of the direction that we got was a strong emphasis on transparency. So, there's a number of items that are included in the state budget document, which is before you, and my apologies, I understand that it's kind of blurry, I'm working off a PDF instead of an Excel file and it didn't come out as clear as I had hoped, but the, this is the state budget document, this is the, what has to be sent to Trenton. All the numbers have been approved by Trenton, right now, the only action that's required is the governing body to vote on it following the public hearing. But there's a lot of things in the state budget document that have to do with not just the budget, but actually of the town's finances as well, and I want to make sure that you are aware of that because you can use this document as a resource during the year, so I just wanted to highlight a couple of those, all right? You have the budget document in front of you, for example, if you go to sheet, three, I can't read, 3A1, okay, is the budget message. Okay, now, the budget message is where we get a lot of information across, it spans several sheets. Sheet 3A1, okay, is the city manager's message to the governing body, okay? Sheet 3B, and I understand, it's, the screen is hard to see, but this is the cap calculation, okay, and there's two cap calculations, okay? The left side represents the appropriation cap, that's where you're limited on increasing your inside cap appropriations by more than the cost of living allowance. Cost of living allowance this year was a .5 percent, that's this number here. And then, we did a cap bank ordinance, which allows us to bring up that amount to a full three and a half percent, okay, and then the excess gets banked for future years. And down on the bottom here, you'll see that the maximum amount within the cap is seventy-five million eighty thousand. We did need to utilize some of the cap bank, okay, not, well, I'm sorry, we didn't need to utilize the cap bank, we needed to utilize the cap bank ordinance, because the cost of living only being a half a percent, okay, our increases were greater than a half a percent, so it was a good thing that we did the cap bank ordinance because we needed to fall on it. Okay, over on the right side is the levy cap calculation, okay, that's what says you can't increase taxes by more than 2 percent except for certain exclusions, okay? And in this particular case, you know, we talked about the tax increase to the municipal levy, and in this particular case, this, we did have to utilize cap bank, we had to utilize some of the money that was banked in the 2012 budget. So that's why you'll see at the bottom, the maximum amount to be raised by taxation with the levy cap exclusions is seventy-seven million, and the amount to be raised by taxation with the exclusions is seventy-seven million, okay? We still have money left in our cap bank, approximately seven or eight hundred thousand that we will be able to utilize next year if we have to, okay? But these are the cap calculations that were sent to the state, all right? Anybody has any questions, you can always let me know. Sheet 3C is, you know, I've talked a couple of times about our accumulated absence liability, this is where we have to let the state know what that liability actually is, and what the accumulated absence liability is, is if, as employees retire, they're entitled to unused sick and vacation pay as part of either their labor contract or if they're non-contract and that particular group mirrors another labor agreement, okay? And you see that our total liability is ten point five million, okay? And that's if every employee were to retire right now, we would have to pay out ten and a half million dollars in accumulated absence payments. You'll see funds, right below the ten, ten point five number here, it'll say total funds reserved at the end of 2013 is zero, total funds appropriated in 2014 is zero. I've said a few times that before the end of the year, we need to come up with a plan, you know, to address this issue, all right? Sheet 3D, the budget message, is the structural imbalance, and we talked about that way back in budget intro. This is where anything that we see in the budget that could be considered to be a structural imbalance needs to be disclosed, and we also need to disclose what we're doing about it. On here, for instance, revenue at risk, you see the parking utility operating surplus, we talked about that, that is a revenue at risk because it's only, it's contingent on the operator, the parking utility having a surplus. What we're going to do about it is, we're going to start stepping that down annually beginning next year, we're going to reduce it by one-fifth every year for the next five years until it's gone, okay? The other revenues at risk, you know, we had talked about, they all have offsetting appropriations, so that when the revenue at risk goes away next year, a similar budget appropriation will also go away, okay? There is also a number of non-recurring appropriations, the recreation department is purchasing a vehicle, that's a one-time appropriation, that'll be gone next year, a few other things like that. Toward the bottom, you'll see a prior, no, yeah, prior, no, I'm sorry, a future year appropriation, okay? And that's $2,400,000, which is an increase in 2015, a projected increase in our debt service, okay? That's assuming that when we go for the financing plan on the tax appeals, that's assuming that we're given five years, like I said, we hope to get seven, we hope not to get three. If we were to get five, we would have to increase our debt service by $2,400,000, so we know that, so we're disclosing that to the state. Last sheet of the budget message is sheet 3E, we had talked about this one as well, this has to do with employee health benefits. By statute, we're required to say what the total cost that we expect the employee health benefits to be, what we expect the employee contributions to be, as well as any other reimbursements. So you see the total anticipated cost of thirteen million four hundred seventeen thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars, that's the exact projection that came from our third-party administrator. We're expecting employee contributions of $580,000, the library reimburses us $487,000, and for the first time, we'll be charging the parking utility for their employees $57,000, so that the, the net budgeted amount for health benefit claims, not the fixed cost, but the claims, is $12,282,000, okay? As you go through the budget document, the next sheets have to do with the anticipated revenue, I'm not going to go through them all. Sheet 11 is a summary of all those revenues, you'll see one column, what's anticipated in 2014, next to it is a column of what was anticipated in the 2013 budget, and the column to the far right is what actually came in last year, okay? Bottom line is that the amount to be raised by taxation, seventy-nine million three hundred and six thousand, total general revenues of ninety-four million four hundred and sixty-two thousand. Following the revenues, then we get into the budget appropriations, and again, I'm not going to go through each one, except that, just know that these are all department budget appropriations till we get to sheet 30, which is a summary of all the different budget appropriations, and you'll see the total at the end, ninety-four million four hundred and sixty-two thousand matches the revenue, the budget is in balance, okay? Just so you know, something Kathy and I talked about today, want to make everybody aware, the column that says paid or charged, okay, that's anything that's been expended or anything that's been encumbered, and that's as of December 31st, 2013, okay? We pay a lot of bills after December 31st, but the budget document only reflects as of 12/31/13, okay? Next couple of sheets quickly have to deal with the parking utility, sheets 31 through 33, same thing, starts with revenue, goes into appropriations, the revenue matches the appropriations, and that budget's in balance as well, okay? Okay, moving on to, sheet 40B is the capital budget, okay? I had said last week, capital, first time we've had a capital budget since 2007, okay? And this is where, it's only a plan, these numbers aren't fixed in stone, they can be changed at any time by the governing body, all right? It's just a plan, it's what we plan to spend on capital in 2014, that's, the capital budget refers to this budget year, 2014. What follows after that, on the next few sheets, are the six-year capital plan, we haven't done the six-year capital plan yet, so by next year, these sheets will all be filled in with what we anticipate our six-year capital needs to be, all right? Basically, that's the budget document, last two sheets are 41 and 42, basically mirror the resolution that you'll be voting on later, okay? So as I said, you know, what we're looking at is a, is a budget increase, an increase to the municipal levy of 4.37 percent, the average home assessed at $240,329, and Hackensack will see a, an increase in their municipal portion of their taxes of $161.79. The, the school budget's already been passed, the county budget is scheduled, I think, for July 9th. Once the county budget has been adopted, I'll provide you with a tax analysis of, now that all three budgets, of what the third quarter tax bills should look like, you know, just so that you have a heads up when the tax bills do go out, okay? That's basically the presentation on the budget document, if you guys have any questions at all, following that, we would open.
I have none, anybody from up here have questions?
None.
None?
None.
So none, thank you, Mr. Mangan, appreciate it. Okay, so resolution?
Well, you need to open to the public here.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to open the meeting to the public to speak about the budget, the budget only, this time's time to come up, please give your name and address to the city clerk.
Need an intro, need an intro and a second, need an intro and a second.
May I have a motion, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Rich Gelber, Clinton Place.
Mr. Gelber, sorry. Second by Mr. Sims.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Go ahead, Mr. Gelber, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I got to be honest, I think it was the most well-presented, understandable budget, many, many years in the coming. I'm not a good accountant, I think it was presented beautifully, and it's just, it gives you a taste of what you could have with the city manager working with the CFO. Mayor, please, get us a city manager.
Give Mr. Gelber.
I too must congratulate our new CFO, this is absolutely outstanding work, in all my years in the city, I've never seen anything that brings such clarity to what we're doing. But why do we have a separate parking utility, whatever that unit is, why isn't that just part of the city?
You want me to answer that, Mayor?
Yes, please.
From a budget standpoint, the parking utility is separate from the budget because the thinking is that all the expenses related to the parking lots should be paid for by the people that use the parking lots, so it's all the revenue from the, from the lots paying the expenses, so we never use any taxpayer money for the parking utility, that's why it has to be separate, it's a separate budget.
All right, not critical, but seems logical.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on the budget? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Say.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now, resolution 219-14.
Need an intro.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, I'm sorry.
Your turn.
It's a resolution to adopt the budget for 2014.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay.
Um, wait.
He wasn't supposed to vote. I have to change it.
Baby, I should be abstaining, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Let the record show that Councilmember Pataglia abstained.
Next resolution is resolution 220-14.
Resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Next is resolution 221-14.
This is a resolution authorizing the submission of a New Jersey Department of Transportation Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Application.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Next is motion 222-14.
This is a resolution authorizing the submission of a New Jersey Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Grant Application.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Next is motion 223, uh, next is resolution 222-14.
We're up to 223.
Sorry, 223-14.
220, 223-14 is a resolution authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 224-14.
Is a resolution authorizing change order number one for upgrade to the heater panel for the generator for the EOC renovations.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Next is resolution 225-14.
Is a resolution to award the contracts for the 2014 summer food program to New Way Concessionaires, Inc.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Next is mo, uh, resolution 226-14.
This is a resolution authorizing the refund for extended day summer registration.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Next is 226-14.
227.
227-14.
Is an emergency appropriation for tax appeal refund to Rexon Operating Partnership LP, Rexon Construction Group, and Three University Plaza SPE.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 228-14.
Is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack as a stigma-free zone.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 229-14.
Is a resolution assigning professional service providers and authorizing the mayor to execute contracts with such qualified professionals for consulting municipal engineer.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 230-14.
Is a resolution for the payment of bills, there is a change to the resolution that was in the packets that was distributed and that the council got. The current fund now should read $607,066.3, grants is $2,351.98, payroll is $1,535,179.56, public parking system is $10,676.53, capital is $125,957.50, escrow $7,106.6, trust account is $55,062.2, total expenditures has now changed to $2,343,399.68, and interfunds and transfers is $95,395.95.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, usually we go right into public, we go into public comment, but we're going to take a short, we need to go into closed session for about five minutes, the public will just bear with us, we'll be out shortly. It's for a personnel issue.
Need a demotion for the resolution?
May I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under section 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee, whereas the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss the following issues to personnel matter, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion, the outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days or as such time as the court does require confidentiality.
Okay, ready? Be right out. Thank you very much for being patient. This time, there's a new resolution, number 231-14, it's whether or not to keep or to terminate the services of Wright Associates as public relations consultant effective immediately. May I have a motion, please? Roll call?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded it.
I, Councilmember Pataglia.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Nay.
Please, please, guys.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like a motion to open to the public, please. Need a second, please? Oh, yes, before I open to the public, there is a public meeting Thursday here at 9:30, public's welcome to attend, of course. 9:30 a.m., yes. Okay?
Okay, now, we had an intro to open to public for...
Yes, I need a motion, please.
And I need a second.
Need a second. Somebody second.
I offered it.
Second.
Okay.
At this time, the meeting's open to the public, please come to the podium, give your name and address to the city clerk, thank you.
First up, I'm Richard Serbo, Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey. I, um, I didn't get up to comment on the budget, but that was an awful lot of money to just whisk through, okay? And you said it was a plan? Wow, okay. I wanted to start by saying something about last meeting, I always think of things when I leave a meeting and then get back to you on, on something, and Kath, Kathy Salvo, Kathleen Salvo mentioned about giving in cars as a perk, and I think that was a good point, I think it's a perk from yesteryear, I think it's time to think that over, why do town officials, why do, why does everyone need a car, okay? It's, it would save money, okay? I also want to bring up, before the election, that you folks were victorious in, there was a panel discussion, there was a debate, it was at the Mount Olive Church, Pastor Robinson did a fine job, I remember it well, and I asked a couple of questions, and one of them was, if you're elected, blah, 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 will you stand up to increases unquestioned every year? And I think Kathy took the question and said that she would do her best to stand up to increases every year, and I think it's time to talk that over, I do, I think a moratorium on increases might be in line right now. It's, it's not a bad idea, get your house in order, no more increases, how about five years? How about three years, if five is too much? No more increases, okay? Just a couple of other things, taxes, taxes are too high, we all know that, we're talking about increasing taxes again, already, you're, you're mayor and council for a year, we're going to increase taxes, and I also want to bring up rents, because rents are a form of taxes, rents are so high in Hackensack, it's, this is like Beverly Hills now, okay? So, and, uh, so that's about it. I want to end by saying, you know, that cultural center could be something for Hackensack. Uh, if it's anything, uh, when it's finished, like the Performing Arts Center in Anglewood, it would really give a boost to this town. And, um, so, I, I don't know, I encourage everybody to move that along, or, or see if it could be moved along. And, uh, I'll just mention that the cultural center this, this weekend, the small one behind Saint Francis Church has, uh, the start of a show, it's a professional group, the show is Race, it was on Broadway, so I encourage everyone to support the cultural center and show up for the show, uh, or tell your friends to show up for the show. And, um, that is it. I, I, I thought I had one more thing, but I, I forgot, so I'm just gonna pass it by. Thank you very much for allowing me to, to speak, and, uh, have a great night. Thanks.
Richard Solik in Hackensack, New Jersey. For clarification, did Mr. Patag- did you abstain on the budget?
I abstained.
You abstained on? Well, speaking of Pataglia, is there any further along in terms of the illegal race to Councilman Pataglia's wife?
Starting discussion, we should have an answer on July eighth.
Fair enough, thank you.
Me? My microphone's set on. I said, real quick.
Go ahead.
Turn the clock on. He asked if there was discussion on, on a certain thing. I said we would be, we have started discussion, we'll have an answer on July eighth at that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Greenman, Councilwoman Greenman, excuse me, do you consider yourself above the law? I'll take silence as a no. However, uh, I was very surprised at the last council meeting when you invoked the terminology of the great silent majority, which you claim to be supportive of you. I think you, you're well back into the sixties, uh, rhetoric, but you missed your administration. Uh, the one you are most closely related to would be LBJ's, insofar as.
No.
No, it was a mistake.
No, he's resetting the clock.
I screwed you up to begin with, and then you're backed down.
I'll get through it, Rosie, don't worry, I'll get my points out, so don't, don't play up the clock on me. Lyndon Baines Johnson, because his problem was a credibility gap, just like you. Last, uh, meeting, Jason Nunamacher got up and he, he produced your financial disclosure form, which, uh, is a matter of public record, and on which it states that your place of business as an attorney is one seventy Prospect Avenue, fourteen M., correct?
I'm not doing to the.
She's not answering, she's not answering, but I got it here, okay? Okay. Now, on your, on the listing, uh, put out by the State Supreme Court Attorneys Index, you're listed as an active attorney, and again, held out as a Hackensack agent. You have no other offices, do you? Your silence speaks volumes, Rosie, you're great. You're the gift that keeps on giving, I swear. Okay. You live in a high-rise district, Rosie, have you ever looked at the zoning where you live?
Can we stop this? John?
Okay.
Can you just get to your appointments, Mr. Solik, please?
I'm getting there, Mr. Mayor, I'm getting there, I pick up a seat, you know?
Just address, address properly.
Excuse me?
Just address properly.
I know how to address properly, John, don't get into content, be careful there.
Thank you.
Okay, our three ordinance, no building or premises shall be erected, altered, or used except for uses designated for each district as follows. And you're gonna leap for joy at the first part, Rosie, 'cause it says professional offices in multifamily dwellings, which is what you got, you're holding, you know, you're practicing law out of a high-rise on Prospect Avenue. But, then it says, meeting the requirements of section one seventy-five dash six point six G. Let's take a look at that. We can skip the first part, but it says not more than five percent of the original dwelling units can be used for this purpose, that's not relevant. But, no dwelling unit above the second floor level measured from grade shall be used for this purpose. I got a feeling that the fourteenth floor is a little bit above the second, do you agree? Parking shall be provided at the rate of four parking stalls for each one thousand square feet. No office facility, facility shall have less than four, four designated parking stalls. Said parking stalls shall be designated with the name of the professional occupying the office space. Every day you get up, every day you answer a phone call to your place of business, your home, you are violating this ordinance. Mr. Costner, you're the last man standing, I guess. Uh, I'm gonna hand you these documents and request that you pass it on to the building department, so the appropriate action can be taken, and that a red sticker likely will be placed on the front door of Councilman, Councilwoman Greenman. Now, there's a nice anecdote I'd like to share with you. And I went to college many, many years ago, an introduction to poly sci one, they always tell this story, nineteen thirty-six election, F D R was at the top of the ballot, and I think, is Amel here? Do you remember F D R, I was thinking, you might, and I'm not being facetious.
I was two years old.
Okay, all right. I, 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 that was not a, you know, a shot, okay? And, and this, this young candidate for New York City Council goes to Jim Farley, it was a big Democratic poll, you may, some of you may remember, F D R made him the postmaster general, and he says, "Mr. Farley, you know, I got some great ideas for my campaign." And, and Farley says, "Come over by the window, lad," and they go over by the window, and he's overlooking the Hudson River, and there's a barge sailing up the Hudson River. It's a good story, you wanna hear? And he says, "You see the seagulls?" Cir- I'm almost done. Circulating, why, be quiet, I didn't ask you to talk. I'm, I'm just, I'm there.
That's fine, thank you.
And he said, "They're circulating over the garbage." And he said, "F, think of F D R as the barge, you don't have rules, John." I'm almost done, John, and she's, now she's. Yeah, happy to be cool.
Did we remove an African-American lady? We did remove an African-American lady.
Now, Rosie, look to your right, because they are the barge and you are the garbage.
Thank you, Rick. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, I don't, I don't know how I can follow that, Daniel Carolla, eighty-eight, Clinton Place. Mayor, yesterday you and I sat together during graduation with, among others, Frank Albolino and Mike Melphy. It was my first graduation sitting up there, and I enjoyed the pageantry of commencement, as well as the friendly cordial banter you and I engaged in. Because you see, at the end of the day, Mayor, we all root for the same team, Hackensack, and you play for the team, Mayor. But unfortunately, we're losing, and we're all paying the price. We're losing, Mayor, because you picked a bad team. Back in high school, I played softball in gym, and Mr. Harris would make us pick teams. You know who I wanted on my team? Guys who could hit the ball, because that's how our team would win. We didn't like picking people just because they said they could play, but hadn't proven themselves, they were a bit of a risk. We didn't pick our friends first, because friendship has nothing to do with the ability to hit the ball. We wanted to pick, pick people who could hit the ball, which is why I always got picked last. But in all honesty, I was fine with that, because my competitive nature and my desire to win superseded any personal aspiration for glory. Over a year ago, you picked two teams. The four that sit with you up there on the dais, and the inner circle of close employees and political consigliers who've helped move your, who, to help move your vision of change forward. Rose Greenman was on one of those teams, how's that worked out for, for you so far? Anthony Rotino and Tom Amorato were also on those teams, how's that worked out so far? The last time I addressed you in this forum, Mayor, I was told that I was out of line for a quick bit of sarcasm aimed at Mr. Screevo and his relationship with Puppet Master O'Toole, and I apologized for that, but frankly, I feel this administration is out of line, and you need to apologize, Mayor, for picking such a bad team. The last time I was up here, I asked you to do us all a favor and reread your campaign literature. I, I presume you clearly haven't, 'cause we're still in so many of these predicaments, so, so I brought some with me, and I'll, I'll just read a couple of quick excerpts here. "We will not tolerate corruption, there will be zero tolerance for secret backroom deals, there will be no special breaks for friendly developers or threats and intimidation of residents. We will vow to budget honestly and spend less of your money, we will bring legal fees under control. We will bring transparency to City Hall, televise town meetings, I guess YouTube counts, and provide more information to residents online. We will put your money back to work to rebuild and repave your crumbling streets." In less than a year, your administrat- administration has imploded from within. The jobs for insiders, the cronyism, the nepotism, the outrageous legal fees, the bullying, the bumbling incompetence, when juxtaposed with your campaign rhetoric, just makes me laugh, but it also makes me angry, because I'm rooting for Hackensack, Mayor. I'm on this team too, we're all on this team too, and all I can do, all we can do is hope and pray and fight and act, so that you're all picked last in twenty seventeen, thank you.
Earl Warden, Dean Terrace, Hackensack. I would like to start off by still saying, I haven't heard anything from the information I gave you back on May twentieth.
If I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yes. Yes, you may, stop the clock, please.
Mr. Warden, I, I did, uh, hear what you had said last meeting, and, uh, I, you will be getting something in the mail, which would be a whole auditing of your account. I can't discuss it now, because it is a personnel issue, and it is in litigation, but it is out in the mail to you.
Everything, everything about me is not in litigation, which is.
No, sir, but I, I can't discuss personnel issues.
We're gonna move on.
But this way you know.
Because it was funny when I woke up this morning and read the front page.
Mr. Warden, he, he gave you his information.
Okay.
And I'm, and I'm gonna speak, 'cause you left the meeting, and I spoke to you, was speaking about you last time. As far as the mayor and council responding to you, it would be inappropriate, because you're, it's a personnel issue, we do not deal with personnel. Mayor and council does not deal with personnel, we deal with, that's for administration, it is not for, it's, it, excuse me, it is administrative, and we are legislating.
But this is like the Christie administration, like.
No, 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 no.
Let me, let me go, let me go where I'm going with that.
It's our form of government.
Okay.
Okay?
It's your form of government.
We do not deal with personnel issues.
Didn't you just go in the back to talk about personnel issue?
That's a, that's a, that's a, was a vendor, it was a personnel, but it was a vendor, it was an employee of the city.
All right, so, so I, I, I guess you just gave me some more homework to do to look up this form of government, but moving on, it's ironic that I read the newspaper this morning, and Mr. Rotino just sued the city for the same things that you allowed him to do to myself, a few other former employees, and a few current employees. A lot of the charges that are being brought against you guys, that he's quoted in the paper, is the very same things that were done against me. The difference is, I'm not making a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars a year where I can go and retain an attorney to come after you guys, and, and my numbers aren't that great, 'cause I wasn't making that much down there anyway, I was doing what I'm doing out of love of what I did, and you allowed him to bully me out, and the only reason why, I'm not in the paper with the lawsuits, because I can't afford an attorney, 'cause I wasn't making that much. But it's really ironic that he did that, because he should know it firsthand, because he's done it to others. You know, um, you're, you're saying my matter is a personnel issue, it's not something that you guys deal with, but you guys put the people in place who did that? So I still feel that you are somewhat responsible, and I brought it to your attention, because you put the people in place, you hired the people, or, or appointed the people who allowed to be done to me what was done. And for that, I brought it to your attention, because like I said, maybe like the Christie administration and George Washington, maybe you had no knowledge of what the people underneath you are doing, and if that is so the case, I think that's a sad form of government, that you are the mayor of Hackensack, she's the deputy mayor, and you are council people, and you have no clue about what the people underneath you are doing to other people. And if that's how government, that's why I'm glad I never tried to get into politics, and unfortunately, politics hit me, though. You know, um, like this guy said, you know, this, I voted for this team, and, and I, I really wish, like I said, I really wish I hadn't at this point, because you took away something from me that I really loved to do, and that's to work with the kids in the city of Hackensack, did it for a lot of years, where I'm a family of Hackensack, from Hackensack, and someone not from Hackensack got me out of Hackensack. If, if you could follow that, that's a sad scenario. Mother, thirty-two years with the school system, sister, twenty-eight years at a, at an institution in Hackensack, and I was sixteen years at the recreation center. And after July thirty-first, which some more of our personnel issues will be resolved, we, I will have a whole lot more to stand up here and say. And who knows, maybe at that point, I could be like Mr. Rotino too, and, and try and get a 401K plan off the city. You know, it, it, this, this is, this city is upside down, and it's really sad, and I've been here since nineteen sixty-six, and it's sad to see where it is right now. And we thought you were the people who were willing to turn it around, and y'all, y'all should have made rights and made lefts. That's just my opinion, it's like, like, but everybody else has one, you know, you know the saying, this and that, I'm not gonna use those words on this microphone, but, um, I'm looking forward to this letter.
Yes, sir.
I'm hoping this soon, I hope it's, you know, I've only been waiting since March when I first gave it to you, Mr. Costner, I first addressed it to you, um, way back in March. It was only until May twentieth when I brought it here, now all of a sudden I'm getting a response. Why didn't I get a response from you, Mr. Costner?
You're getting it now, I, I did investigation, so.
Three months later?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's how this government works? It takes three months to get a response?
No, sir, we have had litigation, I had to watch your.
I had to go over your head to get a response?
To the chair, please, Mr. Warden, not back, no back and forth.
Okay, well, I had to, you know, that's how this government works, that's sad.
Thank you, next, please.
Good evening, Jared Wexler, eighty-nine, Burn Street. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out to you the ramifications to the city of the recent suit brought by Mr. Rotino. Mr. Mayor, it does not matter who was right and who was wrong in this suit, the citizens of Hackensack are the only victims. Assuming that it is true that you and Mrs. Canestrino were seeking to dismiss Mr. Rotino, it is the two of you who put together this ticket and sought assistance from those outside the city of Hackensack, such as Mr. Rotino and Mr. Amorato. This administration is fond of blaming past administrations for anything that trouble arises. Mr. Mayor and Mrs. Deputy Mayor, you have no one to blame but yourselves for allowing this to stain our city. I regularly read the New York Times, whose motto is "All the news that's fit to print", and until yesterday, they had not seen fit to print anything about the politics of the city of Hackensack since an article in nineteen ninety-three. And even then, that article is highlighting our nonpartisan form of government. That either means that we've reached a new low, or your recently dismissed P R manager did a good job of publicizing the city. Furthermore, it would appear that he's working on Mr. Rotino's behalf rather than the city's. Mr. Rotino was brought into this city to spur economic development, and now he's afraid to come to work. Again, it does not matter who was right and who was wrong, it does not matter if one of the sides has chosen to fabricate the truth as each side is claiming. How will this aid in attracting businesses to Hackensack? This council is sniping back and forth at each other, once again, it must be pointed out, this council was elected together, with a promise to revitalize Hackensack and end the lawsuits against the city. It does not matter if this lawsuit goes to trial, it does not matter if this lawsuit is settled, or even if this lawsuit is dismissed tomorrow. The damage has been done to the short and long-term economic prospects of this city. I certainly hope that you have both taken long looks in the mirror, as regardless of the validity of the allegations made against you, you're guilty of incredibly poor judgment at the city's expense. Thank you.
Hi, my name is, I'm not used to a microphone, so I hope you can hear me. Um, my name is Sandy Weiner. Well, I am used to having to lower things for my height. In any case, my name is Sandy Weiner, I live at 200 Catalpa Avenue. And I moved my business here about three and a half years ago because of some of the good things I was hearing about Hackensack. And just recently, I renewed my lease for my business for another six years, again, because of some of the good things I hear about Hackensack. In April, when I moved here, purchased a house with about $14,000 of taxes on it, I found out just down the street, we're gonna have a halfway house. I've never been told this, I've talked to many, many neighbors, they said no one was, was notified of this. And when I've talked to people, some of you sitting here, I was told I can come here today and find out and speak to an attorney. I don't know which of you, or any of you are the attorney I'm supposed to be speaking to, but it seems a little odd that I called the city of Hackensack, I'm told that this is a state issue, and that Hackensack had no choice whatsoever. So no, no residents were notified, there was no variance, but this can be done, and no one can give me information. And it just doesn't seem logical or right that, that we would be here in Hackensack and then I would move and find this out. And, and even when I first walked in, and I, sir, you might be the one who said it, the first thing I heard when I walked in, when the meeting was started, was that there was a meeting with the residents. Amazing that I wasn't able to find out. It, it must have been, I guess, a, a secret list or something, because I called, and again, spoken to some of you, no one told me about it. So I was wondering how you get invited to the secret meetings. And I'd like to find out again. Um, I want someone to tell me that, that Hackensack had no choice in the matter, and why they didn't have any choice in the matter.
I'm gonna let our attorney speak to that, please.
Well, initially, um, there's a significant difference between a halfway house and a group home. I believe a group home is applicable here. The bottom line is, there's a state statute that applies to group homes. It's clear, it's concise, the, the city has limited to no, um, um, authority in this regard. If you want to stay after the meeting, I'm more than happy to discuss the state statute with you. And how it applies, and what the issues are.
Well, I always define that it's a group home versus a halfway house, because, again, you're the first one who's told me that that's what it's called. Is it just semantics?
No, it's not. There's, there's a state statute, I do not have it in front of me right now. It's, it's clear on...
So who will be deciding this group home? I mean, do we have to worry about our safety? No one seems to know.
These are all issues that are, these are, these are all issues that are set forth in the statute. Um, there's definitions of what a group home is, what type of residents are there. I'm more than happy to go over it with you and pull the statute. I don't have it in front of me right now.
At, at your, well, you said you were gonna discuss it with me afterwards.
I'm more than happy to stay and I'll go pull the statute, we can show it to you. Don't, do not have it in front of me right now.
Could you please, uh, Mr. Coster?
And, and there's...
As far as the meeting goes?
Wait.
I'm sorry.
Before that, though, um, and, and the state's allowed to just come in and put one of these homes, or halfway houses, or group homes in, without letting residents know, and the city has no say so over?
The city has no say. If it's, if it's not a halfway house, a group home, it has absolutely zero say. A group home is treated as if you or I were, were buying a home or anyone else in Hackensack. That's how they're treated, that's how the law provides, so it's, it's a state, it's a state issue.
Okay. How do I get invited to these secret meetings?
I did not plan the meeting, so I don't know, I was just asked to, to cover it, so I don't know how the invitations went out. But I'll, I'll certainly be happy to meet with you also, and go over the, exactly what we went over at the meeting. I'll, I'll be happy to, you know, stay with you, and I'll, I'll go over exactly everything that went on.
I'd be delighted, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Boreto, Poplar Avenue. Actually, piggybacking on what it's been said now, um, 183 Poplar, when I came last week, we discussed, um, that the state, I guess, has the authority to do this without us even having the opportunity to question it. However, we don't even know if it's a home, because according to what was written in the record, uh, last month now, it's been about a month, they stated that it was from Pascaut Valley, there were residents that were in a hospital setting that were being dispersed throughout Bergen County. Nothing was said as to who was coming in, if it was children, adults. It wasn't a foster group home setting, as I had a, one of the residents last week ask me that if it was, you know, she thought it was a foster home. If it's a foster home, I, I know what foster homes are. I have family members that grew up in them, and actually, in my home in the Bronx. But this is not what we've been told, we don't know anything. What I do know is that up the block now, it's being torn apart, sidewalk has been ripped out, parts of the streets, because they have to make bigger sewer, uh, holes for the, for the sewer to come out. So I'm wondering, how many people are coming in 183? And some reason, I, I'm still guessing that the city has to know something to get these permits and everything done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Pursuant to the statute, if it's, if it's in fact a group home you're speaking about, they would have to go in and get a building permit like any other resident would. They don't, they don't have to go before the planning board, they just need a building permit. So I'm assuming they have the requisite, um, construction permits from, from the city.
So couldn't we find out who actually put in for those permits and find out who's coming in? Because we don't know. And again, according to what was written in the newspaper, it was not clear. All it stated was that there were residents from a hospital being dispersed throughout Bergen County. And I asked last week if we were getting how fair share, or if they, we know, you know, how many people were being placed, not just in Hackensack, but throughout Bergen.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may, may I make a suggestion? Maybe, um, Mr. Cisco and Mr. Barelli can work with, uh, Mr. Coster and, and, you know, provide information to the residents about this issue.
Maybe we should set up another meeting, Mayor. I, I think it'd be a good idea.
I did check one on Willow, because there was a permit issue, I believe, and there was also some property maintenance issues I wanted addressed over there, because people were complaining about it. And, uh, Joe, do, Mr. Boreto, do you know when this, I don't, I know the one on Willow when, um, Allen was pretty recent?
Right.
When did the Poplar house, do you know when that was purchased?
It was approximately six weeks ago.
It was purchased six weeks ago?
Right, it was in foreclosure, sold for 400 and something thousand. It's the newest house on that street. It was built like in 2003 or 2004. And it's probably the only one that could be equipped.
There, there was absolutely no notification to the city when they buy these houses.
Okay.
I mean, when I heard of it through Mike Melphy and, and Mrs. Hubbard, that's the first, first I had heard of it. And then I got a call on one, on, on Allen, and I believe there's actually another one.
Uh, yes, in fact, there are quite a few. They're purchased, just like you or I would purchase a home, and they're not publicized because of the, the Privacy Act.
Well, my only concern was because it was made public in the newspaper that these residents, that these, you know, residents were coming out of a hospital setting, it concerns me, because it could be anywhere from a physical disability to a mental one, and if it's, you know, we have, like I said, it's a block away from the elementary school.
From my understanding at today's meeting, Mayor, the, um, yeah, I, I believe in that house, there are four young ladies. They, they have, uh, actually associates with each one that are with them 24 hours a day. Uh, they are disabled. Uh, there are, I think rumors went out that it was, uh, gonna be rehab for, uh, uh, criminals and so on. It's not. It's basically disabled, uh, people, uh, which are monitored 24 hours. Uh, the homes are, are actually, uh, purchased, it's, it's under privacy, no one knows, uh, but they do have to maintain, from my understand, it, it's almost like a commercial property, they need sprinkler systems, that's why you see a lot of renovations. Um, another question, actually, one of the residents brought up, would it decrease their property value? And they said absolutely, really not, because the grounds have to be capped up so well, you would really never know that it was a group home. Um, but they really, uh, the, the state monitors, uh, the residents there, they're kept track of. Uh, it's almost, um, from what I understand, they, they cook with, with them, so it's like family meals time and everything else. They're perfectly monitored all the time, nobody's walking the streets alone or anything like that.
I guess my concern is that the state monitors them, but who's monitoring the state? Especially the state that we're in.
From, from what I understood today, and from what I saw, I mean, they were very dedicated people, uh, but again, I think maybe another meeting might be a good idea, and I'll try and get out, you know, a little, I, I, I don't know who set up the meeting before, so I can't, I can't...
It would also be a good idea to get a, let's get all the information and do an educational thing and maybe...
Right, actually, I...
I would love to.
I had, I had a member.
Where these houses are, so we can, we can tell it, the residents what's happening in their area.
Mm-hmm.
Because obviously, we can't stop them, because you're just buying them up from under our noses.
No, there is no, no way of knowing.
And I just wanted to, I would love to be a part of that, if it's possible.
Definitely, sure.
The other thing was, um, and I know the, the tough, but I just wanna make a quick comment. I was at the graduations yesterday for, my son happened to graduate from the eighth grade.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And one thing I've always said about Hackensack, and everybody knows, I'm, I'm big on my Bronx where I came from, my son moved here, five days old, and he is Hackensack, you know, go Comets, blue and gold, the whole nine. It was great to see through all the different events that we've gone through, and I've seen a number of you at the events for the school system and everything, and how everyone says that when they're little kids and they go through, they come back and they work here, and they're part of the educational system as well as other parts. Yesterday at graduation, they mentioned that. And it hurt me to then, in the same, that same day, see what this city's going through. And I know it must hurt a, a number of you up there, that, that this is where you were raised, and this is where your life is, and this is where you work. And my concern is, we all have a stake in it, we really have to come together, and we need leadership to right this ship, because at the rate we're going, I don't wanna be hypocritical and tell my son, things are gonna be great, and then I look down and I'm gonna say, what the hell am I saying?
Right.
I'm not gonna lie to him. We, we need things done, and we need them done now. And we need to stop the nonsense that's going on here. It's an embarrassment. You know, to, to work in New York and have people come and say, wow, so, you know, your town's really doing great in the paper, it's embarrassing. So let's just see if we can get this done, because it, it's, you know, Hackensack is not, it's not looking real good right now. And I'm, I'm imploring everybody here that we need to get things straightened out. Thank you so much for the extra time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
Deputy Mayor and Council. I live at 344 Prospect Avenue, and there are two questions that I would like to address with you this evening.
Did, did you give your name and address at first?
Yes, Annette Jankowski.
Thank you, ma'am.
344 Prospect Avenue. My building is diagonally across from the property that Mr. Pinellas owns and would like to erect the LTAC, as we all know. However, it has been turned into a parking lot in the last couple of months. He demolished the buildings, as you know, gravel has been put down, and now it's a parking lot, which we can only assume are for his employees at Prospect Heights Care Center. As a board member of my building, and as a member of the condo co-op advisory board, people are coming to me and asking me, why is he being allowed to do this? It looks awful. This is a residential street, and it's now a parking lot on part of the street, so why is he being allowed to do this, is my first question.
Go ahead.
Um, Ms. Jankowski, um, as of yesterday, I, I was working with the building department on this, and, um, as of yesterday at 3:30, they were given final notice that there is to be no, no longer, or anyone, is anyone allowed to be parking in that particular area? So you should not have seen any vehicles parked there today. If you do, please get back in touch with our building department, they're well aware of it, they were there, they took down plate numbers, they went, they worked with, they visited Prospect Heights, they informed them in no uncertain terms, that is not a parking lot, and it's not allowed to be used as a parking lot. Thank you. Hopefully, that will be the end of it. But again, if it does continue, please contact our building department, they're well aware of it. I will. Thank you, we appreciate that. You're welcome. My second question concerns the toxic waste disposal that Mr. Pinellas has applied for, which he apparently has the sterilizer in the Prospect Heights Care Center at this point. Okay. We would like to know, when the Board of Chosen Freeholders puts this on their agenda again, will we be notified in time so that we can rally our troops to attend the meeting and hopefully defeat what he intends to do? And is he processing toxic medical waste right now at that center for his, you know, for that facility?
He's not processing medical waste at, at that facility, but he does have medical waste, which does get picked up. All, all medical facilities have medical waste, some is hazardous, some is regular, just regulated medical waste, there's different, different categories. From my knowledge, it's being picked up like any other nursing home, hospital, uh, any medical type of operation. Uh, what he's looking to do is put this machine in, which, and he was also looking to bring in materials from his other sites to do that. We spoke with the freeholder, Dina Cola, she promised us that before that went up, before then, that she would contact us so we could contact you. I still have not heard from her, but I will, uh, give a reminder call and make sure we know.
Okay.
All right.
Because we are very concerned about it, it's a health issue, and it's a real estate issue, but thank you.
Thank you. And to speak real quickly on the, uh, the parking, they would have to have a use variance before they could even be considered.
That's correct.
In front of our zoning board, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
But they weren't parking, do you remember?
Yeah, I know.
If it doesn't do a dozen cars there.
Mm-hmm.
I forgot my egg timer.
We got one for you.
So I'm gonna have to go on. Debbie over here, Mayor, Council people. The reason why I'm here tonight is that, a couple of truthful, like, remember when you were campaigning, you said that you were gonna run a transparent, uh, operation? Apparently, the transparent operation is costing us thousands of dollars, because it wasn't transparent. You required a lot of money, a lot of money to get some paperwork that was open to the public. That was the attorney's fault, he had some bad legal information. You fellows have been arguing, there were only two of you. I'm happy tonight that four of you at least got together, and you got rid of the one, one thrown on our side. The newspaper said that Mr. Rotino was constructively fired. He's not here tonight, I don't know what constructively fired means, but he does have a city car. So if he was constructively fired, maybe you should send some of these guys that are looking for a raise, to go up and pick up our city car from his parking lot in Franklin Lakes. I was actually going to ask for the resignation of all of you tonight, but since four of you have kissed and made up, I'm not gonna do that. I'm just gonna ask Ms. Reiman, resign. You're not a Hackensack person.
Uh, Steve Gilbert, 304 Clinton Place. Through the chair, because we want to insist on that. Ms. Reiman, I'm just wondering if Kathy called you and said Anthony was a drug dealer? Was that before or after John asked, um, a contractor if he needed health insurance? Because like I said last night, cuckoo, cuckoo.
Come on, Steve.
Um, to Mrs. Canestrino, who's minding our, our finances, if you can answer me at the end, um, if we've taken a look into Mr. Screvo's, um, billing cap, and the issue that I've continued to raise with that, because I asked that Tuesday, we, we addressed that one. Um, and I know you guys have your hands full, um, getting rid of Mr. Rotino, um, so I, I know you've got plenty on your plate right now, um, but, you know, have we started the search for a prosecutor, an auditor, an attorney, a labor attorney, a PR consultant? You guys addressed that one tonight, thank you. Um, and on and on, because, you know, we're starting to get rid of the cancer, but you gotta get the whole thing.
We have put out RFQs, since RFQs, well, for, not a reorg this year, but first, for the yearly contract, yes.
Thank you. Um, and just, um, on that point, because, you know, while we're talking about all the, all the mess here, um, you mentioned that you reached out to Mrs. Dina Cola on that freeholder board, regarding this. Just wanna remind you, she was part of this mess. Mr. Rotino?
Well, that was...
I, I mean, I was there when Mr. Rotino ran for BCRO Chera, and Ms. Dina Cola showed up at my house to get my parents' signatures on his, um, on his, on his, uh, petition.
But that's not a particular issue that this...
I, I know, but I just, I, I just want you to be very sensitive to that going forward. I think, you know, you said it last night, you trusted people, you gotta take a step back and you gotta look at this.
I hear you 100%.
Um, and just, real quick, to just address, um, Mr. Coroli and Mr. Wexler that got up here. And just real quick to just address Mr. Caroli and Mr. Wexler that got up here. It's been 10 years and 20 something, 10 months and 20 something days that I've been coming here and banging my fist about this. I'm, you know, I'm right there with them and I agree and, you know, it's been reckless, some of the stuff that's gone on in the last year, and I absolutely agree with them. But, you know, right now is, right now is not the time. Right now, we just gotta put our stuff on hold for a little while and get rid of all this, and then you can come back, because I'm gonna come back too and I'm gonna bang the fist. But right now is not the time. You gotta put your personal stuff on hold. And Mr. Wexler, you pointed out the New York Times thing, I was just as disgusted last night when I read that and I saw Mr. Amorato quoted in that. And Mr. Amorato is the city's PR person, and he was quoted pretty much in support of Mr. Rotino about how he's showing up here all, and trying to do his job. And it disgusted me too, but he was fired tonight before you got up and said anything. The council did address that. And it's time that, I disagree with just as much of what they're doing as you do, but it's time that we all put our stuff on hold for a little while and get rid of all of it, and then we can come back and pick it up. Because there's more work to be done. You only got rid of one tonight. Hopefully Thursday, we've got some more good news, and then hopefully when you have your reorg, we've got a lot more good news. And then we can all pick up and get back where we started.
Union Mayor, let me first congratulate the four of you for finally doing the right thing. Ms. Reiman, I wish I could say I was surprised, but, well, anyway. I have to address it because it costs the taxpayers a lot of money. I asked for those documents, and everybody knows what I'm referring to, four or five times. I came here and I begged with Mr. Screvo for the documents. I said what you were doing was illegal. And I went back and I looked at some of the campaign promises made, and I won't quote Ms. Canestrino, when she indicated, and we quote, "We want to bring more openness to local government, so people know about the decisions that are being made that impact their lives. We want people to have access to public documents. These are not difficult things to do. All it takes is the commitment from the governing body to run an open government." That's a quotation, to be fair, it was probably written by your former campaign manager, Mr. Amorato, but it's still attributed to Ms. Canestrino. Mayor, you're a Hackensack guy just like me. We dressed it last night, but I have to call you out because, quote, "Public money is being misspent and wasted, and that must end." We will end it. That was the promise. By decision dated May 27, 2014, Judge Cantillo of the Superior Court of New Jersey gave us the reality. The reality is that, quote, "I note that in addition to lacking textual support in the statute, the city's policy would have the inevitable effect of restricting access to public records." Again, the city's policy would have the inevitable effect of restricting access to public records. A $450 special charge sought to be imposed by the city upon the plaintiff, which was me, as a precondition of production of the requested records was unauthorized under Oprah and improper. Accordingly, plaintiff is the prevailing party in this proceeding, and award of attorney's fees in his favor is mandatory. $14,000 this city has to pay to my attorney. Over $6,000 must be paid to your city attorney. What kind of, that money is now ripped up and flushed down the toilet. And I was here and I begged four or five different times. I came here and Mr. Screvo, I'm sorry he's not here tonight, very smug, said I didn't know what I was talking. Well, Judge Cantillo thought differently. So my question is this, and you can answer it when my five minutes are up. I think Mr. Screvo should have to pay my attorney $14,000 because it was his bad advice, and I think he should discount his bill every dime of what has already been paid. But at the same time, the five of you did let that happen. So, you know, that's not right. Mayor, I came here last night and I asked if you were aware that you're a municipal prosecutor who's charged with the task of prosecuting drug crimes, if you were aware he himself was convicted of a drug crime, and you indicated you did not know. I did some research myself, and I found an article in the Bergen Record, and I'm quoting the article. So we're all clear, I'm quoting the article I found, public document. "An investigation into a $10,000 a week cocaine ring that operated in Bergen and the state counties has led to evidence of a check fraud scheme," authorities said. It goes on to state, "Yesterday Frank Catania Jr. of North Heldon was charged with possession of cocaine and possession of cocaine with the intent to distribute," authorities said. Investigators searched Catania's house last Friday and confiscated cocaine and paraphernalia for distributing the narcotic, including a scale and packaging material," authorities said. As I said, he has a drug conviction. I'm not gonna say what the conviction was for because I don't wanna be misquoted and I don't want any action taken against myself, but Mayor, what's going on? How does that happen? How come no one else up there can Google?
If I may...
Can you stop my time?
Stop your time. If I may, I don't believe I said I didn't know about it last night.
Okay.
Because I did know about it, and we're...
Well, you said, I asked, how does it happen? And you said, I don't know. Good question.
I said, I don't know how it happened.
Okay.
Which is true. I don't know how that happened. How did he become an attorney?
I, well, okay, but is that your rebuttal as to how, as how you hired him?
Let me just defer to the attorney for a second, please.
Mr. Nunamacher, obviously, we've been made aware of this, the city will look into it and report back. Obviously, we can't comment on a personnel issue, but it will be looked into, and if you have any documents you wanna provide in an effort to...
Why do I have to do your work?
We're not doing your work, but if you have something we don't have...
Your firm's getting paid $60,000 a month! Okay, I'll move on, I'll move on.
We're looking into that. Start your time, thanks.
I'll move on. Mayor, well, sorry. I read Mr. Rotino's complaint. I have it right here, the lawsuit. First, I said to you, I'm not gonna say something to you publicly, I wouldn't say it to your face privately, I don't believe you would say something like that. My concern is this though, and maybe you can look into this. Clearly, Rose, Ms. Reiman, I can't call you councilwoman anymore, I'm sorry, you're such an embarrassment, I'm not gonna embarrass the city by calling you a councilwoman anymore. Obviously, by her vote tonight and by the fact that she must have relayed a conversation that was had regarding a personnel matter, again, I'm not saying she said what you said, but maybe there was a conversation to Mr. Rotino, which is how it ended up in her complaint. I'm very concerned that she has an allegiance to Mr. Amorato and Mr. Rotino, and she's in that back room last night discussing that litigation. So now my question to you is this, Mr. Morris, can we please do an evaluation of a relationship between Ms. Reiman and Mr. Rotino to make sure that private confidential attorney-client privileged information is not being leaked to the other side? If an evaluation can be done by your firm, I think that would be a good step. Thank you.
Time's up. Thank you.
Mr. Brado got a few more minutes, can I? No, kidding.
Richard Pontoseca, 120 Meadow Street, Hackensack.
How are you, sir?
Good morning. I know everybody up there and I trust everybody up there. You all know my family. We, you all know my family, and you know, me and my brothers fought for 25 years, and when an important situation came up, we buried the hatchet, not in each other either. Now, everybody sees me with my two sons. We work in business together. In the mornings, sometimes we go at it tooth and nail, believe me when I tell you. And you almost wanna walk away, but we finish the day's work, we get the job done. What I'm trying to suggest here is, no one comes between me and my sons, that much I can tell you. You three, you people up there, the five of you, are a team. No one in this city should come between any one of yous. If someone touches a hair on any one of your heads, the other four should be right there, solid. And that's the way you should, the city of Hackensack is your cup of tea. You gotta keep this thing going. And we got a lot of faith in you, we understand, I understand personally what you walked into. You walked into a big, big, big mess that nobody was taking care of, and you're trying to put it together with a budget which they never had, and that's, that's a huge task in itself. So I got a lot of respect for the time yous are putting in. Keep in mind, all of yous, that yous are a team. Don't let anybody in this city come between yous. If someone comes in between yous, get rid of them, fast, because you're a team. And that's the only way you're gonna work up. I got a lot of respect for yous all, and good luck to everybody.
Thank you.
Regina Depascal, Parker Avenue, Hackensack. I spoke with somebody from DCA today about Mr. Rotino paying to have the Cal meeting videotape. The short answer I got was, get a new city manager. Okay? That was the short answer I got. And then she looked up, and so we have advertised for that, so that's a good thing. It's just not right, not right, and it's being used against the city. And it was allowed to have it, but it should not happen again, I hope. Last night there was discussion about rice, and you know, we're all saying no, no for the city manager, but if you're doing the rice, which means you're letting him go from the redevelopment position also, yes, go for it, abolish the position, and do it by committee with public input. No, you know, big title for somebody that can, you know, go off on his own with things. I'd like to pick up on what Mr. Nunamacher was saying about, he requested an evaluation of the relationship between Rose and Anthony. I would like some clarification, because I've been hearing a lot of rumors. And if those rumors are true, that the relationship is other than professional, we have a problem. Okay? I don't know through the chair if Ms. Reiman can confirm or deny any of those rumors, which I'm sure she's heard, that her relationship is more than a professional, a councilwoman, and a city manager.
I believe if that were the case, that would come out in depositions in this lawsuit.
Okay, well, I'm not willing to wait for depositions on this part, because, also, following up what Mr. Nunamacher was saying, I had this written down before, Jason, so we just were thinking the same, but Ms. Reiman is an adverse witness in that lawsuit. She should not be part of any of the discussion, because I read the lawsuit also, and that claim is against the entire city, not just Mrs. Canestrino. She should not be part of it. I, as a resident of Hackensack, do not want her in on that lawsuit if she is an adverse witness. And I don't, Mr. Morris, maybe, maybe not, you know, you don't let the enemy in your camp. And if she's named in that lawsuit, and unfortunately, Mr. Bataglia also is named as a witness to that claim, I don't think either one of them should be involved in the discussion of this suit. And this suit, absolutely frivolous. I couldn't understand how he got to the discrimination, as he has, I don't know what his standing, what his protective status was. And again, reading the suit, he's doing it on behalf of somebody else for an instance that happened when he was not even an employee of the city. This is how far he stretched for that. And so then he didn't have to file a Title 59 tour claim because he had discrimination. So, also, you know, the discrimination has fee shifting? Defend that vigorously. Rack up your bills and charge it to him, please, please, because that's, that's what he deserves on that. Mr. Rotino did not file his financial disclosures. Surprise? Anybody surprised? I filed mine. Ms. Reiman did hers. Everybody else up here did theirs? Everybody, except Mr. Morris, I don't know if you were required, but that's another, for another, another time. But most of the claims in Mr. Rotino's lawsuit have already been refuted by people. Mr. Lacino, Mr. Bataglia. I am absolutely, I can't believe he is making unsubstantiated claims against the PBA and the police. I, I can't believe that. It's despicable. Thank you.
Good evening, Kathleen Salvo, 184 Hudson Street. I am sickened by the bogus lawsuit that Mr. Rotino has filed against us. I take it personally because I am a taxpayer and a resident of Hackensack. I asked last night, or somebody asked Mr. Ocasner about how many days he's entitled to, and you said you didn't know, because he hasn't been working, I think legally, he started working for us, the article said, in August of 28th, which is not even the year, which is like 10 months. And for every, I understand for every month, you get one sick day and one vacation day.
One and a quarter.
So based on all the days he's been absent, he's gonna be working for us until 2020 or 2030 or whatever, because he's used all those days up. He took, he took a cruise, he took sick days for himself, for his dog, for wherever, and I'm sure he used more days than he's entitled to. So I think this needs to be looked into, because when you're a no-show, you're not supposed to get paid, you're only allowed X amount of days. So I think we should really look into that. As far as cleaning house, I commend you for getting rid of one person. I was very upset about the New York Times article, because we're paying this man to go against you, to tell the New York Times that, to support Anthony, that was terrible. So I'm glad we got rid of one person. I think you should get rid of everybody else that you hired. I think we need to turn, turn the page over, get people who know Hackensack that are professionally, that are professional and experienced. And I agree with the attorneys too. I don't think they're right for us, I have said that before. We never get a straight answer. We always get double talk on whatever we answer. And they're no brainers, they're questions that everybody in the audience knows how to answer, but somehow our attorneys do not know how. I commend our CFO on the budget, a great job, it's the first time I've seen a good budget like that in many years. Representing a lot of work, and thank you all. I also saw last time around that you put in money for the cameras, but I understand we need a resolution for the cameras on Hudson Street that we've been waiting for so many years for, because it goes over...
If it's over the bid threshold...
All right, it's $40,000, so I really hope that we can get the resolution in by July, because we have some problems there, they're abducting children, and it's our neighborhood. So we really need those cameras. And we've been asking for them, two murders afterwards and all the other problems that we have. And Al Dibbs did a great job on finding us the right people to do it, and they're professional, and we checked into lots of other people, and it's gonna be the right camera people to use. So I hope we can get a resolution by next meeting, so I hoped I had them for the summer, but it didn't work that way because the budget wasn't scheduled, we had to postpone the budget. So that's about it. Please continue to clean house, we're supporting you, we still have faith in you, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Coley, 101 Prospect Ave., ex-city official, 40 years of working experience with the city of Hackensack. I'm one of those employees that you never hear about who does understand the bullying that you can receive from Mr. Rotino. My real question is, the city health department inspectors are all licensed noise abatement readers. Why is the city hiring an outside vendor to take noise readings when I, when I worked, took noise readings at that cultural center and found no violation every time I went? I went 2:30 in the morning, 11:00 at night, 10:00 in the evening. Why now are we paying when the inspectors that you do have, that work for the city, can do the same thing salary-wise? Thank you.
Thank you.
Earl, Warden, like you, I thought this city council was going to do the right thing too. Mr. Pontoseca, like you, you were so on point that it was ridiculous. You never let people penetrate through you. You never let that take a page out of the last administration's book. I'm sure they didn't agree on everything, but when they came up here, they didn't throw each other under the bus. And many of these city council members have been thrown under the bus. Words can't explain as to how I am feeling right now. I was part of one of the most stunning victories in this town, and I'm watching it go down the tubes. Because I know of two city council members, in their quest for total control, has thrown their fellow council members under the train. I have been in this inner circle since 2001. I ran in 2001, I helped with the rest of the elections. And finally, finally, it got in. The people you are so friendly with now are the people, the very people that you were so against during the election. Now you're grinning up in their faces, why don't you just get up and let them take their seats? Because they belong up there. That's where they belong, in your seats. Councilman Bataglia, we know that you were thrown under the bus. We know that, and people in this audience knows, that your wife was denied certain raises and promotions because you were political. You know that, and you know you were thrown under the bus. Councilman Sims, you know you were thrown under the bus. Whether you said anything, it doesn't matter. How it got into certain people's hands, you know you were thrown under the bus. Now it's Rose's turn, and she's being thrown under the bus. Why? Because she's an immigrant? She has a... Why? Because she has a... Hello? You don't know what goes on. You don't know what goes on. Not tonight, not tonight, not tonight!
And the audience, please...
I'm sorry. Not tonight. But I know, Rose, that you're a strong woman. I know that you know the story of David and Goliath. Okay? And you know where I'm coming from with that. But it's so strange that how one city council member was being ridiculed by a blog, and then all of a sudden, the tables turned. Everybody else started getting thrown under the bus. All I'm gonna say about Mr. Rotino is, he was the best thing since white bread with you guys. He was, until, no, he was, until, until he didn't vote the right, he didn't do the right, what they wanted for Mr. Amorato. That's, listen, but the democratic process took place here. The three of them voted to keep him, and the other two didn't like it. So what did they do? They had a tantrum! And they started throwing people under the bus! It's terrible! Take a page out of the last administration's page. Even though we had many problems with them, they always stood united. They had a united front. They had a united front. As a person that worked my behind off to get you in here, it's disgusting. It's disgusting. Now, just because I'm the only one up here, you know, against everybody else, don't mean that everybody else is right. We know that. The pack isn't always right. As a matter of fact, as a supporter, I've been accused of having a direct line. Yes, I had a direct line. I admit it. I have a direct line. I had a direct line. I don't know about now. Everybody knows that I was on the transition team, that one of my, yeah, and you weren't, Regina. And one of my, and one of my biggest things, one of my biggest things was that I wanted to show some, uh, get some, um, minority, more minority representatives into city hall because that was one of the issues that a lot of people in the community brought up during the campaign. I gave Mr. Rotino, uh, um, resumes. Yes, I did. What about it? There were RFQs. I was trying to get them. Now, if you got a problem with that, then I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All right. Time's up, Ms. K.
Okay. And let's deal with facts, not rumors, Ms., uh...
Time is up. Thank you.
All right.
What's your email? I'll subscribe you. You'll get them seven days.
Please, please, Steve.
Uh, Rich Gelber. Mayor, I wasn't, I wasn't going here at all tonight, but I, I have to answer this hater that was just up. To dare say about throwing under the bus, she got that one all wrong. And I don't think we're going down the tubes. I think if anything, we might've been going down the tubes. I really see a turnaround and I see a potential for change. I just, I can't let this hating go on. Some, I was called a hater. I don't think I'm a hater. She's a hater. She was, wanted to become a human resources agent for the city. That doesn't work all the time.
When did that happen? What are you talking about?
I read your, I read your emails. I'm not going there.
Please. I am just... I'm not even qualified for that. What are you talking about?
Please, no back and forth.
Mayor, I, I meant that, I meant that in humorous way, not, not a real humor. We have a human resources director. That's why there shouldn't be so much interference with people sending in resumes. I want to urge the council to try to collect any calendar schedules or attendance records on Mr. Rotino and have him prepared because we have a suit and I think the city has to be ready to, to defend the suit. Um, I think we need a record of any, uh, development meetings that he sat in on. And I think urgently, any staff in his office or any staff that he dealt with directly has to be interviewed, has to be spoken to now, before its deposition, Mayor. I'm, I'm asking the city to take a proactive approach on this litigation. Today alone, the amount of people that refuted things in that complaint are, are, it's, there's no basis to a lot of that stuff. And before we're involved in millions of dollars in litigation, and he seems to be very good at that, the guy has a record of litigation like no individual I can, I can think of. I think the city has to be prepared to shut it down and shut it down very, very quick. I think we should consider asking, uh, Mr. Screvo's firm, McGelroy, to step aside on any matters pertaining to Mr. Rotino. I don't know if they can really be fair on this and give the council the, the guidance you need on this. If, if we ever needed a special counsel on any particular matter, I think it's right now. I think you need someone with no ties to the city at all. And I think they have to handle this. And I, I caution, I caution four of you, be careful what you say and do back there because I think Mr. Rotino has a pipeline coming out of there. And I, I caution you. Mayor, I'm very pleased with, uh, your action on Right Associates tonight. That's one of the issues that brought me back after a nine-month absence here. Uh, I think if you clear them all, I might disappear again. But I think it's really important, you get RFQs out there, you have to change a lot of these people that came in with, uh, with Mr. Rotino and Amorato. They're not serving the city to the best. We're, we're looking at, at legal bills and I want to tell you, some of this stuff is absolutely startling. One case, there was eight attorneys involved in, in, in a month where there was practically no litigation, really nobody was in court on anything. Mr. Screvo's firm had a $46,000 bill and it looks like it's that, that much money from other attorneys put together. And it's just going to go on and on and on. On one matter, over $75,000 the month of April, not into court. Letter, a, a massive amount of letter writing, telephone calls that actually put us nowhere. And this is going on 15 years, this case. It's going to go on another five years. It's going to cost us millions of dollars more in legal bills. It has to be logged out. Uh, I want to mention that I think the video is, is great. When I'm not here, I watch it, but I, this, this might be mute after Thursday, but I think anyone paying privately to have our video prepared, it's just, it's a conflict. I think it's a big conflict. I think the video guy or his company is responsible to the city council, city manager, not an outside party paying privately to have a video. It's just something doesn't sit well with that. I just don't think it's, I don't think it's a good idea. I just want to ask just a few questions. Is the council looking into Mr. Catania reimbursing the city for his medical coverage? Is that something that you've discussed?
No, we haven't discussed reimbursement, no.
Um, I, I would ask that it's something that you, you talk about, think about. There's no question that the lawsuit was a preemptive strike. It was put together very fast. I think, uh, Mr. Rotino, even, even in his mind, was aware of what was happening here. He saw it happening. He's had a, he's had a real absence here. Tomorrow will mark one month, one month, that that car is sitting in his driveway. Is that back, by the way? Have you picked up the car?
No, but we are definitely going.
There's people here that will do it.
No, we'll get the car.
And probably not on overtime. They'll probably donate their time for the car. Because that car is vitally needed. It truly is.
I agree. I've spoken with the, the director on that issue.
Can I ask if Mr. Rotino's access to city computers and city hall has been limited?
I don't believe so at this time because right now he's still unemployed, but...
Mayor, I would, I would caution you to really limit data access. I don't know that he needs access to any data systems or city hall after hours right now.
We'll look into it. Thank you, Mr. Gelber.
Hey, McCallisterino, Brook Street. Jim, I just wanted to say that your presentation of the budget was outstanding. I've been coming to council meetings for many years and when they present these things, it's like a foreign language to me.
Yeah, thanks.
But when you did your presentation, the last one prior to this, you were very, very, you explained the situation and even a layman could understand it. And I think the residents should really appreciate the good job you're doing.
Thank you.
And get your, your committee.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. And now, one last thing that, all these allegations that have been made, uh, in Mr. Rotino's, uh, charges against the city council members, they accuse me of, or they say my wife cannot vote, uh, because of my affiliation, that I was a retired police officer. I get no benefits from the city whatsoever. All my benefits come from my pension, New Jersey pension system. I have no house insurance with the city. I was cut off when I was 65 because I was under the old contract. The new guys have a different contract. I don't get one penny from the city and I'm sure, I have no benefit from her being on this committee. It's just another way to get her off the police negotiating team and I hope that that fails. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Seeing none, a motion to close the meeting to the public. Dofford?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBros?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, comments from the council?
Uh, yes, thank you, Jim, for the preparation of the budget and the people that participated to prepare a good budget. And thank you all you guys for coming. Have a good night.
Ms. Canestrino?
Yes, also kudos to Jim for, for, for another good presentation tonight. There was a couple of questions tonight, uh, talking back about some old campaign promises about tax stability. And, um, I think if anyone was here last night and heard the more detailed explanation by our CFO, um, that is exactly where we're going. That's exactly where we're headed. I mean, for the first time in, in forever that I can remember here, uh, we have an accurate representation of the city's expenditures and a plan to accommodate those. Not only do we have that, but we have a plan to address the future long-term responsibilities of the city. And that's the very first time that I've ever seen that presented here in the city. Um, that is key. Tax stability is key. We're, we're looking at, um, moving this town forward and being able to present it to developers in a meaningful way. And tax stability is one of the critical things that they look at. So again, thank you, Jim, for the work that you've done there. Um, there were a couple of questions, um, for me specifically, from Mr. Gelber and Mr. Nunnamacher. Um, I think they kind of were tied together, talking about, um, Oprah bills and talking about our legal bills. So I'll, I'll try to address that together. Um, I believe, uh, Mr. Gelber's concern was, am I looking at the city attorney bills and, um, especially with this relationship, I think, to Oprah? Uh, when, when we came into office, Oprah was one of our, one of the big concerns that we had. We were not addressing Oprah requests in a timely fashion. Um, they were extremely, extremely expensive and time consuming. We've been working very hard with our new clerk to try and come up with a process that will be expeditious to make this data, these data requests more transparent and open to our citizens. We absolutely have. In that regard, in addition to our city clerk, we've hired, um, an assistant clerk whose only role is to process Oprah requests. That's basically all Regina's doing now. That's Ms. Carlson? Yes. And both the clerk and the assistant clerk are working very closely with the attorneys to try and remove some of the initial work. I mean, in the beginning, yes, the attorneys were doing a lot more of processing of the Oprah request because we had to. Because we needed to be, um, absolutely certain that what we were releasing to the public was information that should be released to the public and that we were doing it in a way that would not jeopardize the integrity of the city. We're learning. We're making progress and we're learning. Um, these, these Oprah, the Oprah requests, absolutely, it's a, it's a right to everyone, every resident of this community to come here and, and request records from the city. It's your right and we request that right, uh, we respect that right, excuse me. Um, but we also feel the citizens need to understand that with those rights come a rather, a rather large, um, uh, monetary fee attached to it. These things are not as easily accessible as we wish. We're trying to do that. We're trying to get more things online, scan more documents in, make it easier, trying to do all of those things, but they don't happen overnight. So bear with us. We're trying to work through those issues and make it as transparent as we can to you at a cost that's as reasonable as it possibly can. Specifically with the, with the legal bills, I know there was questions about the attorneys charging outside of their fee for Oprah requests. We're hoping that we start to see that dwindle and eventually go away as this process becomes more refined. We worked very hard to have our attorneys come up with a not-to-exceed value of $15,000 a month. I also was hoping to have the Oprah request part of that. Absolutely agree with you. But due to the volume and, and this, this, this data was tracked through the law firm and this data was tracked internally through our clerk, the volume was, has been so extensive that it was not realistic for the attorney to include that into his $15,000 amount. We're working to get there and I hope that's our goal. I hope that we see those numbers come down as more work is transferred to our internal clerk's office and we require less and less of that. We're trying to get there. For Mr. Nunnamacher, uh, we were at a point where we were spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars every month and we felt we needed to raise public awareness. Was it the right thing to do to charge you the $450? Obviously, a judge felt it wasn't. We, um, under advice of our attorney, said something has to be done. We're spending an inordinate amount of taxpayer money handling Oprah requests. And with, with feedback from our attorneys and input from the state, we were told that it was a reasonable request to do so. Going forward, I believe we're no longer doing that?
That is correct.
Okay. Lesson learned, lesson learned, Jason. I understand it was an expensive lesson. We're trying to get there. We're trying to get there. Talking about probably the most important thing that's been surfacing here tonight is where we are today. And anyone who was here last night know that I found out about this lawsuit last night while I was attending the Hackensack High School graduation. So I walked in here and I was extremely disheartened and I still am. It's something that I would never have wished for. Anyone who knows me knows how hard I fought against having this type of lawsuit happen in our city and the costs associated with it. And for my name to be part of that is extremely disheartening to me. But we are strong. We will work together and we ask your support. I think it was young Mr. Gelber that said, "These time right now is not the time for political stone throwing. It's the time to show that we are Hackensack strong." Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't born and raised in Hackensack, but I've lived in the same house in Hackensack for 41 years now. So this is my home. This is my home and I'm proud of this town. And I think, and I know this town. And we fought together and we've stood together and we've conquered more than a lawsuit by Anthony Rotino. And I know if we come together and be strong, this will just be another, a, a small bump in the road that we can accomplish together with all the support from the residents, from the city council members that are here. And I, and I ask for your support. It's very unfortunate in today's society, anyone has the right to pursue a lawsuit. And anyone can accuse you of anything in that lawsuit. There is no way that what's in that lawsuit or any lawsuit has to even resemble the truth. So please remember that when you're reading in the newspaper or we're considering what's happening. We ask you for your support. This is a difficult time for the city. It's a difficult time for us. But I know Hackensack and I know that we will stand together and we will get through this. And I thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. Sims?
Jim did a great job with your presentation. Going to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Get home safe. Good night.
Thank you. Ms. Greenman?
Okay. I'm going to add some, thank Jim about it. I'm going to allow the police officers to leave quietly. I'm going to wait for the police officers to leave, to show their, whatever, have no idea what it is, had asked for the PBA to explain it, but have not gotten. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate, um, your presentation. You're outstanding as usual. Wonderful. I want to express my deep concern and revulsion about comments made yesterday by a member of the public regarding who has the rightful place in the city government. The comments made by Mr. Nunnamacher were an insult to many racial and ethnic minorities that make up this grace and that, this, this great diversity in this city. Thirty-five percent of this city is Hispanic. Twenty-four percent is African-American and 10% is Asian. Forty-six percent of the residents of this city speak a language other than English. These people come from all over the world to suggest that any of these people are not true Hackensack and do not deserve a place in our government is outrageous. I hope my colleagues at the council will join me in denouncing such offensive and bigoted rhetoric and send the message that whether you came to Hackensack last year or 41 years ago or come on here, you, your input, your leadership skills are welcome here. Thank you so much for coming.
Okay. Go over a few things. Uh, we are going to be looking into getting, uh, the car back to where it belongs because the police department's short on cars and if it's not being used, I think it should go there. Comment was made at the podium, addressing two council people, so I don't know who that was. But, uh, for, for making a move and stomping our feet, getting in the way of the democratic process, that did not happen at all. It was a democratic process took place, okay? And an opinion was expressed about, um, something that had taken place in reference to Mr. Amorato, about non-disclosure of his work, uh, working for the county full-time, which was brought to our attention. And I said I would look into it. When I found out it was true, I acted on it. And that's what I would do. And I would expect any council member to do the same. And myself and Mrs. And myself and Mrs. McCallisterino acted on that, and I don't think that's throwing people under the bus. I think that's bringing public awareness to a situation that needed to be made aware of. Honey?
Mayor, thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for your service.
I did not call that a coup. That's a mistake. Okay? Mr. Corolla, team. You're right. Teams lose. Teams sometimes are losing, right? That doesn't mean they lose in the end. Game's not over. Okay? All right? So I, I have really had, sitting up here, you get a little different, different view. And there's one good thing coming out of this. A lot of people who didn't talk to each other for years are now talking with each other. So don't say the city's not coming together, because I'm watching it in front of me happen right here. All right? So, you know, and, you know, the comment, comment made that, you know, we're chit-chatting and smiling at each other, you know? I haven't had social, have I, anybody out there, am I socializing with any of you people that? Or, yeah, no. Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for outing us. Listen, listen. Number one, number one goal here is, is to get the city back on track. We obviously hit a major, major bump in the road here with this lawsuit. I'm, I feel the same way as Mrs. McCallisterino, that nobody knows more than us what these lawsuits are like. Nobody knows more than me. I was in one of them for three and a half years with my wife. I know, they're not easy, and they take their toll. Our goal is to get this over with as fast as possible, with the least amount of damage. I'm saying there's not going to be any damage, but with the least amount of damage. I feel we've made the first move tonight. All right? Mr. Warden, again, is he still here?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. I, I, I can't tell you that you shouldn't sue. If you think you had a lawsuit, you know, don't, you know, there's attorneys out there that would help you if you, if you felt you had a lawsuit. That's all I can tell you. Because I don't think it's right that that's why you couldn't sue. What else? Transparency. Guys, we're, we've, you know, the meetings are on, yes, they're on YouTube, they're not on the regular channel, which we're still trying to work on. But they're accessible. People get to see what's going on here. There's more transparency. You know, Oprah requests, there's been 15, I believe, over 1,500 Oprah requests.
Well, we've doubled what we did last year. Every month, we've doubled.
So, guys, and you know what? Everybody, you have the right to do it. I mean, it's part of, part of government.
Some of them are one line and some are...
You have, you have the right to do it, but they do take time. All right? 1,500's a lot. That's, you know, divide that by 365. You're getting a lot of Oprah requests on average a day. That's not even, that's seven days a week. The political thing, I get it, guys. We did it. You're doing it. It's okay. That's, you know, it's American. All right? So wish everybody a safe trip home, and let's work for Hackensack. Let's get this fixed, all right? Thank you.
In motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second. Roll call.
Hold on a favor.
Aye.